This is the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, September 27, 2021, and at 7:00 PM. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be an audience member to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for a public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Here.
Mayor Protam Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
At this time, I will be offering the invocation followed by Jim D. La Longa, Director of Economic Development, which will provide our pledge of allegiance. Please stand with me. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening now to give you thanks for all the things that you've provided us. We are especially mindful of those that are still suffering from the virus. We ask for your comfort and their progress in trying to get well. We also remember those that have lost loved ones and their sympathy of their needs. We're thankful for the fact that there is a virus that has been conquered and that all of us have a chance to recover from it. Be with us as we deliberate those things that are in front of us this evening. Give us the knowledge to do what is right for our city. We're also mindful of our firefighters and our public servants that protect us. Be mindful of their safety as they go about their business in trying to make our city better. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Council announcements. The 2021 Bellflower State of the City presentation will take place at the Main Event Center on October 7, 2021, at 11:30 in the morning. The State of the City presentation provides an update on the city's recent accomplishments and future goals. Tickets for this event are limited. For more information, please call (562) 804-1424, extension 2267. Mayor Protam Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Bellflower is currently undergoing our redistricting process. The redistricting process occurs every 10 years following the release of the census results. It's an opportunity to redraw district lines based on population changes indicated in the census at the state and county and city levels. We would like to hear from our residents. Residents can submit maps of their own and get involved in this process. In order to draft maps and consider the October 11th public hearing, they will need to be submitted by this Friday, October 1st. Maps received after October 1st may be considered in a subsequent hearing date. For more information, you can visit the redistricting website, Also, you can email at redistricting@bellflower.org or contact the city clerk's office anytime at (804) 1424, extension 2222. That's what I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join their monthly morning mingle, which will take place tomorrow, September 28, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at (562) 867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Santenaz?
Thank you, Mayor. The state of California's COVID-19 rent relief program is still available for California renters and their landlords who have been impacted by COVID-19. The program covers 100% of rental and utility area payments and prospective rent to qualified households. For more information, please visit the state's website, housingiskey.com, or call the Housing Iskey COVID-19 Assistance Line at 1-833-422-4255. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santenaz. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, first off, good evening, Bellflower. To combat significant financial challenges brought on by the pandemic, the LA County Department of Consumer and Business Affairs has launched the campaign, Get Ahead LA. It seeks to safely guide the LA County residents to the financial resources they need to reach their financial goals. Through Get Ahead LA, county residents can find important resources to help manage their unique financial challenges. Get Ahead LA provides residents with free resources such as debt management, wealth building, housing stability, and more. Get Ahead LA is a free online service which is available at getaheadla.org or call 1-800-593-8222. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page 2 of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
If you'd like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If by phone app, it will appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, press *9 to raise your hand and *6 to unmute. You will be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody in the queue?
Mayor, I have a raised hand for Angel Nicholas. Mr. Nicholas, if you could allow me a moment to get the timer on the screen?
Yes, no problem.
Thank you. You can begin.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Angel Nicholas and I'm the acting community library manager for Bradken Peak Library. Unfortunately, I'm here to announce that tomorrow we will be closed. We are having some maintenance issues. ISB facilities is working today and tomorrow to fix the problem and we are hoping that we will reopen for Wednesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that information.
Mayor, I'm seeing no further raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much. Item 12A, Ordinance's Resolution for Consideration, Mr. Stewart.
This is a consideration of possible action to read by title only. Way further reading and introduce ordinance number 1409, an ordinance amending Bellflower Municipal Code, Chapter 8.18, in its entirety to establish regulations for use, retrieval, and abandonment of shopping carts. And I believe Mr. Enigwas will make the staff report for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Jennifer, can I get screen sharing rights, please?
Yes, you can go ahead now.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. For background, abandoned shopping carts are a nuisance, create potential hazards to health, safety, and welfare of the public, and interfere with pedestrian and vehicular traffic. On January 26, 2009, ordinance number 1172 added BMC Chapter 8.18 to regulate shopping carts and required shopping cart providers to install containment systems. However, the unauthorized use, accumulation, and storage of abandoned shopping carts in both private and public property has persisted throughout the city. The California legislature enacted provisions regulating shopping carts that limit the city's ability to impound shopping carts in private and public property. However, the Business and Professions Code authorizes local governments to adopt regulations that are not in conflict with the state's preempting provisions. The proposed ordinance ensures that owners and operators of retail establishments providing more than five shopping carts take reasonable measures preventing the removal of shopping carts from the premises and provides for the prompt retrieval of any removed or abandoned carts. The ordinance provisions include requirements for signage at the business premises and on carts, the submittal of a mandatory plan for physical cart containment, and the inclusion of a retrieval plan to retrieve lost, stolen, or abandoned carts. Regarding signage, the signs on each shopping cart must identify the cart owner, indicate that the unauthorized removal or possession of the cart is a violation of the law, list the procedures for the authorized removal from the premises, provide the contact information for the return of the cart to the rightful owner, and provide this information in both English and Spanish. Regarding the mandatory plan, retail establishments with more than five carts must prepare and submit a written plan to prevent customers from removing shopping carts from the owner's premises and to retrieve shopping carts that are removed from the premises. Owners must submit the plan to the city by March 31, 2022, along with a processing fee that will be determined through a separate city council resolution. The plan must include the following elements: physical measures, such as the installation of disabling devices on the carts, the use of security guards to prevent customers from removing carts from the premises, the installation of ballers or chains, or requiring security deposits for the use of the carts. Daily cart confinement requires the establishment to collect and secure all carts at the end of each business day. And the retrieval plan requires the establishment to retain shopping cart retrieval services to ensure that streets within a two-mile radius of that establishment are patrolled for any carts that may have been removed from the premises. Retail establishments with approved plans are exempt from the payment of fees that may be due for the retrieval of carts that are impounded by the city. In regard to the impoundment of carts, the city may retrieve and impound abandoned shopping carts after a three-day notice to the owner or immediately by providing a 24-hour notice of impoundment. Whether to retrieve or reclaim impounded carts within three business days of notification may result in an administrative fine of $50 for each occurrence in excess of three during the six-month periods ending on June 30 and on December 31. And the occurrence includes the retrieval of any carts in a one-day period. Owners are required to pay the actual cost of retrieval and impoundment if carts are reclaimed after three business days. Carts that are not reclaimed within 30 days may be sold or disposed. The city may also contract for retrieval services. Staff recommends that the city council read by title only, way further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1409, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes my staff report and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report. Do any of members of council have questions of staff? All right, go ahead.
Hey, can you put the slide back up? I think it was the last one that talks about the three-day. No, yeah, right there, yeah. We have to give the owner notice for three days or we can immediately take it by providing a 24-hour notice?
That's correct. If you do decide to impound the cart, for example, if it's an emergency, it's an impediment for ADA, we have the right to impound and then we have to provide the notice within 24 hours to the owner that we have impounded their cart.
The merit of this is to try to get the cart off the street as soon as possible because it's a blight. I can't believe that we would leave the cart there. We would see it, take pictures of it, cost more money to send a letter out or do something when we just pick the cart up and take it. And if we give the notice to come get the cart, the cart's probably going to be down the next block because somebody pushed it away. It just doesn't make sense if that's how I'm reading it. If I'm reading it wrong, let me know.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, perhaps I can help with regard to this. Part of the recommendation for updating the municipal code is to bring it in line with the Business and Professions Code requirements, which are actually quite specific with regard to shopping cart retrieval and fines. So, I completely agree with you. That's the way the state law reads. It is not something that's dreamt up necessarily by city staff. It is something that is reflective of what state law already provides.
So, are we bound by that?
Yes.
Another example why state law does not make any sense at all.
I will not discuss the merits of that particular observation, but...
So, if we were to, you know, right now, if I call a shopping cart in, you know, Public Works comes and gets it, we can't do that no more?
You can do that if it is an impediment to, as was discussed, ADA access, free flow of pedestrian traffic, anything along those lines. The actual idea, though, is to actually foist the responsibility upon the shopping cart owners to require them to have a retrieval service to do it upon our behalf. That way, staff, instead of using Public Works vehicles, can actually call that retrieval service, have it pick up the shopping cart on behalf of the shopping cart owner and the city's responsibilities are then complete. But the answer to your direct question is yes, you can still call up.
Got it.
If it's on a sidewalk or a street, we can pick it up.
Push it in the middle of the sidewalk and take a picture, then haul it away. I just can't believe this doesn't make sense. So, I can see the merits of the other things in this when I read it and it's, you know, we revisit it. Obviously, you know, who knows if some of those systems work anymore? You know? But that was my question, I just said...
But to underscore it, it's not, this isn't necessarily aimed at the city's response to the carts. It's aimed at getting the businesses to make sure they have a retrieval service for the carts, which aren't there.
Right. And what's the, aren't there, yeah. And we, I just know, whatever system we have in place probably works better right now than, I get getting retriever truck around to monitor it, but those guys are in business to do multi-stores, multi-accounts, and they drive around all day and pick them up. You've seen the pickups with several carts in the back.
Well, that's ostensibly true. I think there's a lot of it not happening in this town for some reason. So, we need to get that reinvigorated, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Hamada?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just quickly, hey Bernie, what's the, just again, give us an idea. How many carts have been impounded monthly just typically?
Yes, typically, every month, we end up taking about 40, 30 to 40 carts on average.
One a day?
Yeah, wow.
Less than the yellow bikes, but yeah, thank you.
All right, well, yeah, that's keeping somebody busy. Bernie, just the second question is, okay, did you have any dialogue with the stores and markets before writing this up? Just kind of heads-up kind of thing? Yes, I know that there wasn't, again, public notice, so they should be looking at our notices, but are they ready? Or it's going to, I know it says they, you know, plan till next March, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of time. There's plenty of time between the ordinance taking effect and the actual implementation of it that we can certainly notify the businesses that would be affected.
Yeah, I think it's just helpful to keep moving along. All right, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Anyone else have questions of staff? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to ask and I probably already know the answer to this based off of the response that we got for Councilmember Dutton's question, but my assumption is we cannot raise the administrative fine of $50. That is state.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's directly out of the statute.
Very good, yeah, like I said, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Santenaz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you, Bernie, for coming up with this, with this plan. And I really like the portion that you're giving some incentive for business establishments that submits a plan. I think that's a good incentive. In your estimation, how many business establishments will be affected by this new ordinance? Just like a guess?
A guess would be about 10 establishments that have the quantity of carts, five or more.
Okay, okay, that's good. So, I think it's going to be worthwhile for those establishments to hide the cart retrieval service if there's about 10 of them. So, because I'm sure there's going to be some economies of scale with 10 establishments. Now, on the required signs on shopping carts, on letter E on page 414, you mention about conspicuous signs must be placed and maintained on premises near all customers' entrances and exits and throughout the premises. Does that include the cart confinement area? Are you going to be placing a signage by where they return the carts? Because I was kind of thinking that if someone were to get a cart, they may not go inside the store, so they will not see the signage on the entrance or exit of the store. But if there's a signage, usually if the carts are confined in an area, someone may take the cart from there. So, are we going to be putting a sign by the cart confinement area?
With the, for to the city attorney, Carl, would we be able to impose that requirement on top of what's already listed on the draft ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You'll see that there's a specific provision that says notice may be provided in all those sorts of places or any other means demonstrated to be effective. So, if it's demonstrated to be effective, that it should be placed in those particular areas, which it sounds like it will now be demonstrated to be effective, we will require them to put it there.
I think so because that's where usually carts are going to be confined anyway.
Yes.
So, if someone is to grab the cart, it's going to be not going to the store. They're going to get it from the confinement area. So, I would strongly suggest that we put that sign on the cart confinement area. Okay, that's number one. And then, second question is on the mandatory plan. So, if an establishment does not submit a plan, what is the consequence for them?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so legally speaking, they would be out of compliance with this particular regulation, which means that aside from the $50 that we would be applying with regard to shopping carts, they would actually be open to administrative citations between $100 and $500 per day, so long as they were out of compliance with regard to the mandatory plan.
Okay.
So, then they would be open to regular code enforcement activities from the city for violations of this particular code section.
So, it's going to be a very hefty fine for them?
Yes.
Okay, very good, very good. I love that. And... And one more question. On the, what is the policy on the retrieval of carts? If, let's say, staff has to retrieve a cart for establishment that does not provide more than five carts? So, what is the consequence for those establishment? Because they're not covered under this plan, right? But it happens that staff has to pick up the cart because it impedes traffic, you know, safety reasons and things like that. So, what's the consequence for those establishments that don't fall under this category?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the consequence would be if they only have five carts and they're down one cart, they're only going to have four and after a while, we're going to be keeping them at the courtyard and they won't have any, so. That's going to be the consequence from that standpoint. It's more of a practical consequence than anything else.
No, but let's say if they have five and then they lost one because city staff pulled it, so they still have four. They're still operational somehow.
Well, I mean, as a practical matter, just like any other thing that would be impeding the right of ways, city could retrieve that item and leave it at the courtyard, give the owner information, if we have information with regard to the owner, letting them know that their personal property is located at that location. That's what we do with other types of abandoned type of property and we would follow the same types of precedent now.
So, will there be a fine, though? Like the $50 for this establishment covered by this ordinance?
That assumes that we can track down the owner. I mean, using the example of five carts, I don't know that an owner of five carts is necessarily going to put their name on the five carts, so it'd be more difficult to track down who the owner is.
I think I've seen a store that has no more than five carts.
Let's ride it down, we'll go after it.
Okay, all right. Because sometimes, because I have to go to the store and then I have to find a cart within the store.
The intent, I believe, without looking at the entire legislative history behind this Business and Professions Code section, and one of the reasons that you see it's such a low fine amount is that the big retailers that have more than five carts wanted to limit the city's ability to be able to implement these types of regulations on a specific, unique level for each particular local jurisdiction. So, this was something negotiated by the big retailers and the ones with the five carts, they ran underneath the radar with regard to them.
The same would apply for out-of-town carts, too, that show up. It would be handled the same way.
But right now, we don't know if there's going to be a fine that we can impose.
Except they have to come retrieve the cart and we can recover costs on that, so.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, other than that, I think this ordinance is well-written and I think, as I said earlier, staff has done a marvelous job in putting this together. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santenaz. All right, at this time, we are ready for public comments.
In lieu of public comments, maybe they can make a motion.
Does a city clerk have anybody on the line that wants to give any testimony?
Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
All right, now we're confident. All right, we're ready for a motion unless you want to have more discussion.
Nobody wants to own this?
We disagree with it.
We all agree with it, can't we own it?
No, please, go ahead.
Who wants to be the cart monitor?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to consider possible action to read by title only, way further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1409, an ordinance amending Bellflower Municipal Code, Chapter 8.18, in its entirety to establish regulations for use, retrieval, and abandonment of shopping carts.
You want to put in there that part about Sunny adding the language on the...
With the amendment requested by Councilmember Sunny Santenaz.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any support?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Victor Sanchez, supported by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Please, roll call.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Brings us to item 14, Consent Calendar. Do we, anyone have any conflicts or any of the evening's consent calendar? Or are there any items the council wishes to pull for separate discussion or consideration?
I'd like to pull item 14F, just for a couple of comments.
14F, like Frank, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, for Sunny. Anybody else have anything they want to discuss? All right, Mr. Santenaz, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a comment here about this Resolution 2155 and I want to thank staff for putting this together and also I want to thank Councilmember Hamada. He and I were part of this subcommittee. And as I mentioned when this was brought up the first time, it was brought about by a document from the JPIA, which is the Joint Powers Insurance Authority. And at that meeting, when I presented this, I made a comment that I have not seen anything inappropriate that the city council members have done, either publicly or during closed session. But it's always good to compare this with something that was developed entirely independent of our conflict of interest. And shoving up, there was one item that was added to our conflict of interest statement and I will just read it entirely. It's the recusal for nonprofit organization board of director member. City council members must recuse themselves from contract and/or funding allocation decisions if they sit on boards of directors of nonprofit organizations which are being considered for funding from the city. And I can assure the public that there was nothing inappropriate that was done by any council member. But out of abundance and caution, we added this because, in fact, I would characterize this as we are going beyond what is required by law. Okay, we've been compliant, but it's to the best interest of the public and our city. We've been compliant, but it's to the best interest of the public and our city and nonprofits who are getting funding from the city to put this in as part of our conflict of interest statement. And in the past, council members have recused themselves because there's no financial benefit for council members, which was very, very true, and that's legally required. But we went, again, I just want to emphasize that we went above and beyond what is legally required. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So is there a motion to approve?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, just quickly, I just wanted to share my colleague's comments. Again, when it came out through the JPIA, it, again, sends a message for all cities, and I think it's, you know, the best interest, I think, again, overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Anybody else have any comment?
The committee, the committee that handled this, that we appointed, did an excellent job.
I agree. And we'll use them again on other things of this nature. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Sanianes, seconded by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Please give us a roll call.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanianes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Council reports. Councilmember Sanchez, you can go first tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I'll keep it a little brief, as I'm losing my voice as is, but just want to share, you know, definitely a great, great conference at Contract Cities and just the ability to learn and go out there and network and see what other cities in our, that are similar to us in size and nature, what they're doing to bring progress through their communities. It was just really great to be a part of that, so just want to share that. And then I enjoyed the car show this past Saturday. I also enjoyed the Dunk Tank, which is one of the reasons why my voice is going away. So it was, it was just a good event to see everyone back out there, and everyone looked like they had a good time, and were able to participate in the fun activities from the car show. So that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Sanianes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to piggyback on Councilmember Sanchez's comment on the car show. First of all, I want to thank the Bellflower Noon Lions Club and our city staff, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and all the departments that were involved in putting this together. It was a wonderful event to be out again on the boulevard with this car show, and I believe that it was well-attended, over 200 cars and lots of people going around. So we're back in business in Bellflower. So again, thank you for all those who've been involved in putting together this car show. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanianes. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton.
I, too, went to the Contract Cities Educational Seminar, and there was a lot of good things to learn there. And one of them was on some harassment training classes for council members, whatever, and my wife says I'm a better person for that now. So I really would like to thank the city for letting me go. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the 15th, I attended the Westana Branch Extension Information Session. Again, I want to thank staff. I know they're working hard on putting together comments on the draft of the EIR, so I know those are due tomorrow. So we'll look forward to seeing what comes about, and we'll see how it's going to work for Bellflower. Again, wanted to also mention the attendance at the California Contract Cities. But first off, I do want to, we're going to extend on behalf of the Executive Board of the, you know, Contract Cities, I want to thank the city and staff for attending the event. Again, I think it's one of the most well-done events, and I know we, again, we get a lot of information, and again, there were some great presentations, as with the League of California Cities, and I wanted to congratulate former Mayor Garza for doing a great job on the cannabis session and also on the car show. Again, a great event, and I think I spent more time underwater than, than above water in the Dunk Tank. But it was, again, a great event, a lot of people. So again, looking forward to having some more of those outdoor events for Bellflower. I know that the businesses were really excited, and, you know, some of them were, again, doing well. So again, great job. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. I think you'll recognize from the testimony given during the council comments that all of us are really excited about having the car show back in business again. And I want to personally thank Larry Wehage for all the work he does. He told me today he's already got 157 spaces already signed up for next year. There was that many people that had that much enthusiasm for it. So it's kind of our trademark deal, and we own it with Alliance Club, and it's a good partnership, and it's come off well, and it gets better every year. After 23 years, we come up in 24 years pretty quick, so that was a wonderful event. So at this time, we'll adjourn to the next regular meeting, the Bellflower City Council, at 5:30 PM on Monday, October 11, 2021. We stand adjourned at 7:34.